Asking for businesses to come and show their interest.
Tim Tescher, Georgia Holmes, Karen Hagan, Andrew Kramer, Krista Blain, Carolyn Swartzenbach.
Thank you. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Always a good reminder why we're here. All right, I need to find my minutes over there. I'm going to end executive session to the agenda for personnel. I promise it'll be mostly brief, but I feel that it's necessary. And in addition to that, I would like to table all personnel decisions until after executive session.
I'll make a motion to table the personnel and have an executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we will have executive session tonight. Sorry, it was kind of a teaser, didn't look like we were going to have it, but we do need to have it. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the August 1st council meeting. I'll make that motion.
Let's go back and approve the agenda formally.
Oh, okay, yeah. So the agenda with the changes. I'll make that motion, that's approved.
My motion too.
Well, that's fine, yours is fine as is, we can just second out if you really want to.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. We have an amended agenda for tonight, including executive session. And tabling personnel until after executive session.
Move by Swartzenbach, second by Blain to approve the minutes.
August 1st?
I have a question.
Okay, I have a second? Okay.
Last personnel continue dealing with Lori. Looking at previous minutes, it seems that every time we refer to an employee in any kind of action, I guess for lack of a better word, whether they're promoted or whatever, the pay is also referenced, what the previous pay was and what the new pay is. Is that applied in this situation, since she did lose some salary?
She did not. You lose that? Oh, change in pay, yes, you're right. I thought you meant time off.
No.
Okay.
Because she lost her safety coordinator position, she had to lose some salary. Should that be indicated here?
We can add that.
Thank you.
We can add that, and then talk about it, table personnel after executive session. All right, and this you add.
And looking at, you know, through previous minutes, anytime an employee's pay is affected.
Miss, do you know what that amount is? It's going to be important that we have it on you after we make the motion.
To clarify for record, if you had a reduction of 20 cents from your existing side, it's removing the safety coordinator title and responsibilities. Her last two minutes operating does not change, that's unchanged, but the additional role of safety coordinator has been removed with the 20 cent per hour compensation.
And someone will take that on at some point soon, hopefully.
Thank you.
Yep, that's... Good question, Bob, thank you. Any other discussion of the minutes from August 1st? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Bills in between.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims? Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm just curious, because I don't know. It says here Maria March for the painting of the depot ticket booth. What is that?
It's down by the depot, across Red Rock, there's that used to be a high altitude Lego structure. It's been painted out blue. We did some restoration to it. It was rotting from the inside out, outside the base of it, so it's restored and painted out to be hopefully weatherproof for a while longer. It's a small structure, but it did require one side to be hand painted, each letter individually around what was existing for the lettering. It's one that says the town rules on it.
Okay, thank you.
Good, yeah, not the current town. Very good question. Any others?
Yeah, to follow up on that question then, I'm still trying to understand when we decide to use city personnel to do things and when we don't. Could some city staff have done the majority of this, with her to just come in and then do the lettering after the building itself was painted and possibly reduce the cost?
We could have done more in-house to do it. The big thing is you're dividing labor. If we take somebody out somewhere else to do that, they can't do their usual job responsibilities. Looking at our staff, we keep them pretty busy with other things to do. We have to trail these kind of lists of things that we should actually take care of in the parks. And so with that, I was going to please professional services to do that while our crew did that at the raccoons.
It's a little more artistic to just slap and paint.
Yeah, please go and look at it, because it is something that requires more than just slapping some paint on the side of the floor.
Our guys about to do some restoration for the trim work, so we deleted the base and the window trim, and also sprayed the wasps. But when it comes to the painting, we could have had our personnel on it, but it would have taken up probably, say comfortably 25 to 30 hours to do it. And to take them off other jobs, which were already short-staffed to begin with, we'd be better in our together stuff job to have it contracted out.
And it is a main focal point for tourists, I mean, they actually do read it, and when they stop at the depot. So it wasn't anything we wanted to look nice.
Is it done?
Yes.
So final bills?
It's been trimmed, painted, and polished.
So it kind of looks like a smoky cloud.
It's weathered, yeah. It's a, being that it's aged, we don't want to give it a brand-new shiny paint job and then it takes away its historical to it. So, yeah, it's supposed to be distressed, and that's weather allows it to get more distressed to the rainstorm and precipitation.
Okay. Craig?
You're telling me it takes, it'd be 25 hours to paint that?
Thirty hours.
Does that include the lettering?
Well, lettering, I agree, but I think...
Well, that's what we're talking about.
They could have painted everything but the front where the lettering is.
Yeah, they could have done that, yes, you're right. But to do the whole project with 25 to 30 hours, you say that's... And just to remind our council and publics who, we aren't fully staffed in the Parks Department, Maintenance Department. You have people that take summer vacations, we have summer seasonal help, that are 16-year-olds, they go on vacation. And then we also have another personnel member that was asked to work last week due to other reasons, so we would definitely constrain for people to get jobs done. And we're still that way, we'd like to have some more help.
Any other questions on any other item? All in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Gary. Thank you for the discussion, appreciate it. All right. We are going to do some quarterly updates right now, and Don Johnson from the library, she's our director there, will give us an update on the library.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. We have quite a bit going on at the library this summer. First of all, we gave out 68 new cards in the months of May, June, and July. We checked out 12,180 items. Our patron visits counted to 14,143 people. Our ebook checkout was 1,245. The events at the library number 24 events for the last three months, or for May, June, and July, I will say that most of those were our summer reading classes. We had, most dates we had two classes a day for that. We did have Rapid City Rush come in for our season finale for the summer reading program. It was great, the storm evaded long enough, evaded long enough for us to do our obstacle course, and then Nugget was there to hand out the Olympic medals to the kids and adults who finished that course. And the weather has really not cooperated with our screen on the green this year. I think we had one at the library and one at Centennial Park, but we're going to work on that for next year.
Order up some better weather.
Order up some better weather.
Just don't do it on Tuesday nights.
Maybe that's...
Is that it?
That's our men's league golf night, so it always...
Oh, okay. That's why it rains.
We'll make a note for that, no more Tuesdays. At the events that we had this summer, we had 432 people in attendance. Our meeting rooms in three months were used 110 times, and our computers were used, just 4,924 logins to our computers in May, June, and July. A little summary for our summer reading program, we did have 120 participants who logged in 893 hours of reading. So we're very proud of our children for coming and having a good time. We certainly enjoy having them in the month of June. And we're gearing up for our fall programming, we're going to continue with our lap sit and our story time on Thursdays and Fridays. We've scheduled our Friday events, because we have no school, we have set events for the winter months. The first Friday at 2:00, we have a movie for school-age kids. The second Friday at 2:00, we have a young adult programming, book club, you know, it's the young adults show up and we do stuff with them. The third Friday of the month at 2:00, we always do Lego Day, so show up. It's not just for the kids, we have parents and everybody shows up. We have tubs of Legos that we put out to use. And this year, we're going to start something new, it's called Makerspace, on the fourth Friday of the month at 2:00. We're teaming up with a national education program called STEAM or STEM. That stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. The activities that we're going to provide are really, if you think of it as old school, we're just going to have three or four areas set up with an arts and crafts thing, but they're going to be more science-oriented or engineering-oriented. Legos would be an engineering project, you know, an art project going on there, a math project. We have all kinds of games and stuff that we're collecting to promote the STEAM and the STEM program along with the schools. And they call it Makerspace in the library systems. Our computer education classes, when Rachel attends Library Institute last year, they did a nationally, a national program on evaluating your library. She answered all these questions, do we do this, don't we do this, do we plan on doing this? And it came back with recommendations for improvements that we can make for serving our public. And Rachel had, and Rachel has chosen to build our technology and helping our public work with the technology that we have, and helping us get the technology that our public is looking for. When I went to the convention in Orlando, I went to the National Library Convention, I went to the National Ed meeting, and listened to what some other libraries planned to do this. How we're going to implement some improvements is up our computer education classes that we give. We're going to give classes on basic computer, you know, this is the mouse, this is the taskbar, whatever. We're going to have classes on how to do searches on the computer, how to save information either to folders or to flash drives, or how to take your saved information, put it on social media sites to email, Facebook, Twitter, Tweet, Instagram, all those things. We're going to have some classes on how to use Word, the Word program, and the Excel program. And we're going to have a class on utilizing the state library's e-resources. They provide us with about 30 databases that we can, that we have free access to, either in the library or using your library card at home. Some of those include children's, every single children's book is online, all you have to do is sit down and it walks you right through it. Encyclopedias, there's a website on there where you can get all of the major daily newspapers by going to the state library site. And one that we're really going to promote is a Learning Express site. You can go on Learning Express, study for your GED, your ACT, your SAT, you can take practice tests for those. You can take aptitudes tests to find out if you're more inclined to be a nurse, and then what all it takes to be a nurse, and you can take some testing, and they'll give you educational places, websites that you can go to to follow in any of these that you want. You can take practice tests to be a fireman, practice tests to be a musician. It's just, it helps you write resumes, it's just an amazing website. We're going to offer some classes and show our public that want to come in, how they can utilize this website to help out Hot Springs and to help them do what they want to do technology-wise in our community. One of the last things that Rachel wants to do is have what we call it, we're going to call it a Tech Tuesday, Tuesdays, and we think it's going to be like from 4:00 to 7:00, because we're open late those days. Bring in your iPad, bring in your candle. How come my computer keeps locking up? Well, it's because you have 86 windows open, you need to close some of those out. One of the things that we want to hit on that is, we're not computer techies as far as fixing your computers, but we can certainly show you how to find Facebook and how to get signed into your email, and some things, just some basic computer skills with your new devices that you have. So Tech Tuesdays. Tomorrow we'll be setting up a display from the South Dakota State Historical Society Living Traditions Art Show, it'll be a Native American art show. We got it in the mail, we'll set it all up. It's going to show the Native Americans artwork from historical times in the 1800s, what we consider not that long ago, and then modern artwork like pottery, the three different timeframes. We're really excited to have it. We think it's just a beautiful thing that they're starting...
Is there a period that that's there?
We're going to, we're going to set it up tomorrow, it'll be here until October 14th, so it's going to be here for, yeah. The Friends of the Library are holding their triathlon on September 3rd. I just came from the Friends meeting, it's really gearing up, we're, it's looking to be just as busy as it always is. They're always needing volunteers to help. It starts out early in the morning on Saturday, and you'll be done by noon, but as the triathlon implies, they'll be bicycling, swimming, and running. And there's all different age groups. It's a nationally recognized event, so there are people that come to this specifically to get points, to win, you know, national recognition for attending triathlons. So it's a very high-quality event, and if anyone's interested in helping out with that, give us a call at the library. The last thing I have is about continuing education. The librarians are all about knowing what's out there. Amanda, Rachel, Amy Lee, myself, if we haven't already attended webinars online, we can sit in our office with our headphones on and get library training. We've all got something in the works to listen to, if not having already done it. And they include things like World Library Leadership, the new Young Adult Authors/Readers Program, you get to see what's out there and the latest for young adult literature, technology in your library, and updates from the state interlibrary loan practices and what the state has to offer. So on any given, on any given week up there, one of us is listening for an hour or so on the computer to get some training is something that we need to know. Amanda's going to attend a book repair workshop in Rapid City at the end of the month, so that we can keep the books that we have in good shape and get some more life out of them. Amy Lee is celebrating, has celebrated her third year with us at the library, we're really proud to have her at the front desk. Rachel has finished her second year. So that's what's happening at the library. Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Hannah.
68 cards, do you have percentage of how many are from our community in town versus out of town?
I don't have any numbers for those 68 cards in particular. I do have the numbers that I presented to the county commissioners, and I don't have those in front of me, but I want to say it's like 38% county, and then the rest are city.
Okay, because we did our budget and we were concerned how we were, and that's the number we needed to know. Thanks.
Yep, and if you give me a call tomorrow at the library, I can actually get what those actual numbers were, but that's about what the breakout is.
It's a really good number though. Quite a lot. Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Don, you guys are awesome up there. Lots of programs. Don't ever say there's nothing to do. Took her 10 minutes to list what they're doing, so...
I'm Amanda Scott, Summer Recreation, just here to give you a summary of things that happened over the summer. First of all, I'd like to thank the City of Hot Springs and our City Council for allowing summer recreation to continue to provide recreational activities for the youth in this community. And I'd also like to say it's nice to see that our community is becoming a very active community for people of all ages and all interests, and it does start with our kids too, so thank you. I'd like to remind you that our recreation program provides job opportunities for members of our community, and it also provides our students an opportunity to develop self-esteem, to learn how to build positive relationships with others, especially people in the community, and positive role models, working cooperatively with others. Once again, we offer 13 programs for summer rec. We had 650 participants as a total for all summer. We did see, let's see, gymnastics had 180 participants, that was the highest, that went up 40 kids from last year. T-ball went up, volleyball went up, golf went up, and softball went up, as did baseball, and I'll talk to you a little bit about baseball here in just a second. Some changes that we had, we do have, we did have new tiered pricing. Baseball, we charged about $30. Just, it causes, we need a lot of equipment for these kids and a lot of coaching time and things like that. Weightlifting was $25. Softball was $10, gymnastics was $10, art and swimming were $7, which is very good. I mean, if you get a class of, you know, four weeks for $7 for swimming, that's a pretty good deal. And then all other programs remained the same. Let's see, some difficulties that, well, I'll keep, I'll stay in the changes for now. The hardest, one of the hardest things was finding a swimming instructor, and I was talking to Nolan about that. That was very last minute, we had one applicant all summer long for swimming, and it somehow wonderfully worked out that she was able to get certified. She did a wonderful job. If you ever knew Linda, you'd think, oh my gosh, that swimming program would never last without Linda Stoll, but it did, and we did wonderful. Some changes that we had with this were, we had to change, we had to have two sessions of four weeks. We used to do three, three-week sessions, but because Sarah had, she's a teacher, she had to go back, so we had to cut that a little bit short, but we actually saw some positive things out of that. Looking back at our swimming records from last year, we at least had anywhere from five to seven kids fail their first session. And this year, because we had an extra week to teach them the strokes and the safety, I think maybe for each session, we had two or three fail, and the rest of them passed. And our classes are about 10 per class. Parents were very, very happy about that. The students had a lot of fun with that, they had more time to learn the strokes. We were very blessed to have a good group of instructors who were there the whole time paying attention to the kids, and of course, that's where I spent most of my time, making sure that they were paying attention to the kids. So that, it worked out really well, and I hope that she does come back. She does live here during the summer, so let's hope that she does come back and do that again for us next year. Baseball switched over to a competitive league. In the past, if you've ever been involved with baseball, we were in, I wouldn't say it was quite a league, but we would have games with Custer, Hermosa, and Edgemont, and it was kind of, you know, if you didn't have a full team, we'll mix you up with our team and have a scrimmage, and it really wasn't that competitive, so it really didn't appeal to a lot of the parents and a lot of the kids to play. But since Mike Remington came to us and asked if we could switch over to a competitive league with Shaver, Nebraska, we had 40 participants, we had enough team, we had two minor teams, which are ages seven to 10, and one majors team, which is 12 and under. And I spoke to Mike yesterday, and he was just so thankful that we were able to do this for the kids. He thinks that we're going to have 40-plus kids next year have enough for four teams. Parents were really interested. And if you didn't know, they had to commute every week to Shaver to play a game, because our fields, we didn't have lights, basically was the issue there. So we hope, if we are in this league next year, which I'm sure we will be, that we get our field up to date so that we can host home games here. There was even talk about getting our concession stand up and going, allowing people maybe to use that, because it is in very good shape, and that will bring more people to our community. So I hope to get that up and going for us next year. Let's see. One difficulty that I did have this year was finding instructors. And I look for, what I look for instructors is that they are comfortable working with young children, obviously, but I do look that they're a little bit older adults that can handle teaching kids. And I kind of became the person to not make eye contact, because I would literally bug people and, you know, ask them, you know, you know, tell them that they would be great for our programs and things like that. It was, it was very hard, especially for swimming and for gymnastics, which were our two most popular programs. It seems to appeal because of the hours and, you know, because our summer programs only last six to eight weeks, it seems to only appeal to teenagers. So I was very fortunate to be able to have, you know, stay-at-home moms teach, I had retirees help out. Ron Foster was one of them, and he did, he had T-ball, actually. He did a tremendous job with those kids, he loved every minute of it. So that was one big issue that I did have this year. It was pretty much down to the wire, it took me quite a bit of time to do that. Let's see. Any questions?
I just want to tell you thanks. I went, Joyce Farrell retired after 30 years. I was very concerned about, you know, what was going to happen to the summer rec program, and I am just so grateful how you've taken the ball and ran with it. I can use that.
Well, I, thank you. And I also wanted to thank all the city employees as well for supporting, for supporting us and, you know, making that go really, really well for us and our kids. And we hope to, hopefully get some more programs in in the future, but resources and people to find, it's kind of tough, but we do have some goals to get, so...
And she did casually mention the lights at the ball court, which I thought was a kind, a kind way to throw it out there.
Oh, thank you.
We do want to, we do want to be competitive if we've got a group that wants to do that, so we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. And I also have heard from our softball parents that they now want to join a competitive softball league as well. So we'll be talking about that hopefully in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, last but not least, item C, which seems appropriate for the chamber of comms.
Thank you for giving me a couple minutes here to kind of tell you what we've been doing for the last, kind of the end of July, August, and then what we've got coming up. So again, our Hot Air Balloon Festival was very small this year, we've got it planned for August 20. We've got it planned for August 25th and 26th of 2017. It'll include hot air balloons, gyrocopters, skydivers, gliders, possibly drones out at the city airport. Then we're going to be doing a, Jason has given us the okay to do the tethered nightglo out at the Southern Hills Golf Course on the driving range. So we're hoping to have eight to ten balloons. We would use the clubhouse as kind of a concession area, and people can just kind of mill around there. We're hoping between seven and nine, maybe seven to ten, depending on, you know, we're looking at having music out there, hoping people will really enjoy it. It's a, it's a great venue, and we hope that it goes over well. One of the events that we had last weekend was a Veterans Cherry Ride that came through Hot Springs. Nolan and I had worked with Dave Prey, you know, with this organization, trying to, you know, make all the logistics and things happen here in Hot Springs. I wasn't able to make it to the dinner. I was here with the American Solar Challenge the whole night. But it sounded like everything went well. The mayor proclamation that you did sending, and they were, you know, just ecstatic about.
Yeah, I'll have to talk about that in a moment.
But they're, they're looking at doing this event next year. Talking with Don Ackerman. We would like to see if we can get him to stay here a couple days and maybe do different rides with their group, and the leech riders can take them out. So we're in the process of working with Dave, seeing if they can make that happen or not. But that went, went very well. American Solar Challenge, again, that was like twelve schools across the country with solar cars. The event, our weather wasn't great for them. The day before, they had cloudy weather, so all their batteries, you know, weren't charging. And a lot of the vehicles had to go to Wind Cave in their trailers, and then they drove across to the finish line there. But that's something they deal with each year when they do the solar challenge. So it's all at the mercy of the, of the sun. But everything went well. We brought them back here, and they had their dinner and award ceremony at the theater. And, you know, they, you know, Gayloupe, the head person and that, you know, thought everything went great. And they don't know, it'll be in another couple of years, I don't know what rally they're going to take. But I think we did ourselves very good for what we did available for them. And, you know, Kara, thanks for, you know, housing all of them and, or as many as we could. But that time of year is tough with the rally. But we tried to get as many in Hot Springs as we could. So thank you on that. Some new events we've got for 2017 is, it'll be an art walk, which is similar to our wine walk, but we would have artists in our retail businesses. And we set the date for that, September 23rd, 2017. Trying to do it in coordination with Climb Hot Springs, if they, if they keep the same date, you know, next year like that. So that way they can do the Climb Hot Springs and then, you know, be able to do, you know, a wine walk in Hot Springs. We would have that a longer, you know, session. So trying to put events together, we haven't told the Climb Hot Springs people that, but that's what we're, that's what we're planning on right now, so. And then we've got scavenger hunt that we're looking at doing, April 4th through the 19th. And this again would be, you're trying to tie in some of our retail businesses on the truck bypass and things like that, that we can't do, you know, always. But it would be a scavenger hunt where they would have different clues, I would send them to the next business. And we would give them like two weeks to, you know, do the whole process and try to find the clues. And once you got done with it, you would have a saying, and then we would give a prize to the, you know, first place winner on that. So that's a new event we've got for 2017. Our egg committee, we helped serve lunch on Thursday, August 4th, and did breakfast, you know, Friday, August 5th for the Fall River County Fair for all the 4-H participants, you know, trying to do our share over there. We'll be working with the teachers, setting up the Conservation Field Day for all the seventh graders in Fall River County. They will be, it'll be like the first week of October. We've got to work with the teachers on that. And that'll be students from Ulrichs, Edgemont, and Hot Springs that partake in that. Egg appreciation banquet, we set a date for November 19th of 2016. Events and promotions committee, we'll be doing Small Misses Saturday on November 26th, working on the Cookie Cruise for Christmas in the Hills. We'll be doing a storefront decorating contest for Christmas in the Hills also. And then we'll do our normal Ho, Ho, Ho promotion during the Christmas time. Ambassadors, this month, we went to Works and Clay with Tom Eastburn. New York Life, Josh Gott, and then Bourbon County, Jeff Comsour, a new business that's open here in town. Tourism side, the depot, the top five states that have requested information from Hot Springs are Minnesota, Wisconsin, Texas, Illinois, and California. The top five states that actually visit the depot are Minnesota, Colorado, Nebraska, Iowa, and Wisconsin. As of today, we've mailed out almost eleven thousand welcome magazines to potential guests that want to visit Hot Springs. And you'll continue that through, through this period. Right now, we've had almost eight thousand people come through the depot so far through July, and we'll keep that open through September on there. Upcoming events that we've got here in Hot Springs that we either help with or just help promote is the Full Moon Dance Party. That'll be Friday, August 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to midnight at Centennial Park. We've got the Wildcat Classic, August 20th. The start and finish is at Chautauqua Park. Nate Ritter Bush has been working hard to get that event put together. And right now, I think he's got forty pre-signed up for that. So he's hoping to get eighty to a hundred people of that, so we'll see what happens. The Adventure Cyclone Group that we had stay in Centennial Park is coming back August 30th. Right now, they've got sixty to eighty participants. And we'll try to make sure that the water stays off for them there at Centennial Park this year. We had some electrical issues. We had, we had some electrical issues, and the sprinklers went off after they, you know, turned the power system on. But I'll try to make sure, make sure that doesn't happen in this year. So then we also have the 19th Annual Southern Hills Triathlon, September 3rd. And then we've got our Badger Clark Coway Poetry and Music Gathering, September 9th and 10th. The 9th will be at the Allen Ranch, and then everything else will take place at the Mueller Center here on the 10th. Mickelson Trail Track will be serving lunch at the Minnetoka Trailhead, September 19th. And right now, there's six hundred and eighty-two participants that will be feeding there at lunch. So it was six thirty-five last year. So they're, they're maxed out on what, what they can do in that area. We'll also have Pioneer Days at the Museum, September 10th. And then Climb Hot Springs will be again here in Hot Springs on September 24th. So that's just a little bit of the things we do on top of our, our normal business daily. Any questions?
I just want to say it's, I just want to say it's much more exciting having you out there giving the monthly reports. I appreciate all the details and the hard work that you guys do. You've got a lot going on for the city.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Scott. We did have a council person report, and obviously Scott does a much better job. No offense. More detail, more details. But I appreciate you stepping up and doing that for us. And I have to tell people that Nolan wrote a proclamation. I've been getting all kinds of credit for that and.
Yeah, but you read it, so.
I, I read it.
You did a great job.
I read it well. But I was pretty busy that week, and Nolan stepped up and helped me with that. But a very good cause, so I really appreciate everything you did. I mean, we got some calls that night and trying to keep our city humming that night. And we got a lot of people here and now it pounds the sun for motorcyclists and solar car challenge. They still had good spirits, so I'll give you a lot of credit for that. Appreciate it. Not the weather. The other. We all have to work on the weather next year. Thank you all. Correct. I'm going to move to communicate, communications from the public. I did not get any requests, so if there are none of those, I'm, we voted to table personnel until after executive session, so I'm going to go to committee reports. Carol Ann, you had an admin and finance meeting?
We did. And it was long, and I'm going to be as I can. If you need any more information about anything I mentioned, just get in touch with me. We had a conference call with the city auditors, Donna Dinker, regarding word changes in the 2015 audit with the same opinions. We discussed the need for approval of rate changes at the Mueller. Changes will go through the city administrator and parks committee. We tabled for the next admin meeting the policy for elected officials consulting the city attorney. Mayor will make inquiries regarding hiring a local attorney as city attorney. She's working on that. The committee requested mayor, the mayor council chief close on staying on budget. Tabled proposal for an economic study for Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course. The monetary value of this was debated. We approved the development of a random drug and alcohol testing program for all full-time and hard-time city employees. City administrator and finance officer will work on this policy. During the discussion of the finance officers' reports, we discussed the bid spending and the need for them to have a cash reserve. SDSU will do four hours of training for elected and appointed officials in late October, November. That's in the budget. If you give Misty dates, if you're going to be gone, it would help her. And the way, last, the weight funding proposal, we're confident that Nolan can do most of this in-house, and he's going to talk about it when he gives his report. And that's all.
Thank you. It was good meeting, and that's a very good brief summary. Thank you. Airport advisory committee, you haven't met yet?
No, we did not have any.
All right. And have you met with, your next week? Okay. Back to you, Carol Ann, the Downtown District Preservation Commission.
I'll be brief again. We met August the 3rd. We approved signs at 209 North River, 713 North River. Mary Goulet requested permission for a mural to be painted on the side of the old Robbs Building. Ms. Marbury's going to work with her on that, and they'll come back in the spring. The city provided information on the desire to paint electrical boxes with mural decorations. No presentation was made. We'll need council approval. I'm assuming you'll come back later with that. Living R scheduled Tuesday, August the 16th at 5:00 p.m. If the topic is vacant buildings, plans for filling them. Okay, take that. She, Ms. Marbury also gave us information regarding, regarding court action on the Community Action Building. That's it.
And Carol Ann, when on August 16th is that what time?
Uh, 5:00 p.m. here.
It says 9:00. Yeah, it may, that may be right, but that's another one. All right, thanks again, Carol Ann. Kara, this one you still have? Evans Plunge.
Okay, in August, we have, we have a custodial position available for three to four people that we're hiring. We've hired one and possibly two already. And August 6th, we have a pool party. We had a pool party scheduled, but we had to cancel it because we had fifty-five degree weather. The weather didn't cooperate. It's kind of an ongoing thing here lately. We have a rally special for the rally riders, for and closed. It's half-off admission. And in September, we have a plunge into reading program that'll begin again. We did this last year. September 11th, we have the Patriots Day, where we have free admission for the first responders. September 24th, we have a King of the Rings and a Cannonball Contest at Evans Plunge. There's also on August 22nd, is that right, Parker? The photo shoot.
Right. For this, August 22nd, there's going to be a photo shoot to match the existing photo that was done in 1906. And so it's at 5:00.
5:30.
Yeah. 5:30.
So the next meeting will be the 3rd Tuesday, Thursday, in September at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Again, if you don't have anything, if you think there's nothing to do here. There is a lot going on in Hot Springs. All right, just Parks Recreation, Beautification and Parks as well.
Yeah, we did come to this, this is our first, first meeting every month. So I asked Nolan, and he said, well, they're still mowing, because it's still raining. Parks are my screams.
Rain seems to be the theme of the night.
All right, stage two. Nothing for playing zoning, nothing for public safety, nothing for public works. It's Tim's birthday, so he's playing hockey tonight.
Happy birthday, Tim.
Yeah, happy birthday, Tim. We'll know if he watches that.
I know. I was, but I know he's not here.
Camera's on you.
We do have a, we do have a public safety meeting this Wednesday at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. That's the actual date. Public Works will be in the 30th of February, the last two days of the month. So that's the board's agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Nolan. All good, good points. Skylar, I don't know that you've had a meeting yet with the golf course advisor committee, but it's coming up.
Our next meeting is scheduled for August 23rd at New Atacoff House.
Great, thank you. Thanks for working out a time that works well for everybody. Volunteer Fire Department.
We did meet on that line. Our meetings are the second Tuesday of every month at 7:00 p.m. So we met here last week. We talked, the chief read Nolan's letter that he received with the ninety thousand that was approved as our, as our yearly, I don't want to call it. Funding for, for the volunteer fire department. It also mentioned about the grants, the grants that he was going to be putting in for the bridge that'll go in between from, from river to, to the volunteer fire department. So we talked about that as well. They replaced top vehicle, tires on both, on two of the vehicles, vehicle two and three. The items came in for the grant. They applied for a grant, and that was for bunker and wildland gear, and that did come in. There were thank yous that were read from the Episcopal Church, and they had donated twelve cases of water for the volunteer fire department. That was much appreciated by them. They voted and approved pre-bi propane. There was one new member voted in. And there's structured training set up, which will be held in Pringle this fall, winter-ish time, and they're going to be inviting other surrounding areas to participate in this. Reminder that October 10th is Fire Protection Week, and they're lining up some events for that. They will be having some pump and ladder and hose testing, which will certify the items, and they're checking out some prices on that, but that will be scheduled around Labor Day. Last month, there was twenty-two fire whistles. Luckily, this month, there was only eighteen, so.
That's good. And so the rain gets some credit.
Yes, absolutely. So there's still a lot out there, so just make sure you watch the, watch the little dial and be careful and don't be silly and.
Although the dial, I don't think always gets updated on a weekend.
I don't think it does either.
Just always be.
So just don't.
Yeah, just don't. Just say notify.
Just say notify until the winter, then you have a fire pit.
The breaths, right.
Too hot out in here.
You got it all under control. All right, tomorrow, the Delta Committee for the Annual Use of the Depot. We're just taking a look at it. Don't consume anything from this, but we're, we're going to take a look at that. There was some feedback during the budget hearings, and we've just got, I believe it's Kara Hagan, Carol Ann Swartz, myself, Chris, Jackie. If I'm forgetting someone, I apologize, but, oh, Nolan. Nolan will be there as well. So look forward to input. We've got some data for you all, y'all to look at. Oh, is Pat Lycel going? Oh, thank you. I'm anxious for having somebody. Pat Lycel also featured. Thank you, Carol Ann. So that's tomorrow, I believe at 1:30. That's it, all.
Do I have anything else I can leave? I don't leave, are you? So I'm going to move back to new business. Discussion of possible motion to approve the refat of lots GC34 and GC38, creating lot GC34R, which is for revised, I believe.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second that. Any discussion? We've been briefed on it, so I'm going to just go straight to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll be signing our, my last, right? Great. Thank you for coming and supporting any possible questions, but like I said, Kim briefed the council quite a bit on this, so, and we think it's the right thing, obviously, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to move to item B under new business. Discussion of possible motion to accept 30,000 gallons of propane pre-bi quote from Dakota Propane at 89 cents a gallon.
Very good deal.
I'll make a motion to accept it. I'll second. Any discussion? This was, the goal was bid.
Local.
Local, post the local bid.
Tie for overall.
Same thing was. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nolan, Misty, for researching that and saving the, for making sure we get it back. For saving the city where we can.
Before you make the, on scene, that you would add with historical commission approval to see.
That can be a motion, yeah.
Can't you just add, in one case to the mayor, maybe you could add that to that motion?
Historical commission?
Approval, because a lot of that, those buildings are all of them in the historical district. It's a formality, but it's.
So I think what Carolyn's suggesting is in the motion for I to see, it'd be the motion to approve contingents on approval by the historic preservation.
Yeah. So you haven't looked at it yet, or you?
No, we, they, they haven't gone.
The commission is not yet.
Okay, that's what it wasn't.
Okay. So you want a contingency clause in that?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So item C, discussion of possible motion to award 2016 Fall beside grants with, if I may, with historical commission approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
I have some concerns about this. I spent all day out in Ward Four talking to five different businesses within Ward Four. Talked to 15 different voters in Ward Four. None of the folks that I talked with got a warm and fuzzy feeling, especially as the council was looking at asking the different departments to tighten their budgets for the next fiscal year, calendar year, budget year, as those folks are getting cut back and we're now picking $5,000 available for, for businesses. Nobody was, was anti-business, just that when they weighed the other departments being cut as opposed to this going out to businesses, there were, there was one person that was in favor, there were two that were iffy about it as far as voters, there were 12 that were opposed to it, out of the five businesses that I voted, that I spoke with, same thing. They didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling about it. They, they just didn't support having the money go to them when it might not be going to city businesses, or to city departments. There was an interesting comment from one of the businesses. They said that why isn't the Chamber of Commerce doing this rather than the city with the taxpayers' dollars? So I just wanted to share with the council that as far as Ward Four is concerned, and five of the businesses within Ward Four, 15 people obviously isn't the whole board, and I think 15 people is a good representation if you went around and talked to folks. There was only one person involved that supported doing this. Thank you.
I'd like to add a comment to that from the people I've talked to in Ward One, since it's that ward that I represent, and most of them are downtown businesses, that they're very, very excited that we're doing this project to increase the vitality of our downtown. They feel like this is such a nice benefit to the city and to their businesses, and they were really appreciative. I don't have a number, but when I'm out and about, I get comments constantly on how great they think the beside grant is and what an opportunity it is for the downtown area.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Robbie?
I checked this over, and I've never been for it even when we did it, but I'm really against health food store getting, when we're dressing up their building to sell. They got four sales hiding there for the last two years since you guys approved the people living down in the businesses. Now we're going to put an onion on their building so they can sell it, to help sell the building. So I, I think that's kind of, I don't think tax paid, I mean, I know what's sales tax, but it is the tax for hot springs buying things too, that should be going into this stuff.
I understand your point. I thought about that too, and I really didn't come to a conclusion, but I did think about that.
Well, the sales tax is what fixes your streets. The streets in Hot Springs are falling apart and we're putting money to paint people's buildings and putting onions on their buildings, and we're letting the streets go down. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We'll let them fall apart.
Well, can, can I ask a question? Because it's my opinion that the council approved to spend this money where now, really the decision of tonight is the distribution of it. Okay? But I, I mean, you're right, they're, the, I assume you mean earth goods is on there?
To back up, I think the intent of this all is to grow our sales tax revenue. So if you're using sales tax to grow sales tax, the city is funded through sales tax, our corporate tax, probably, or we have other sources of revenue, those are the two big ones. So if you're able to allow businesses to grow their sales, to grow their sales, we have the mentor and collect more sales tax revenue, which then we use to fund our departments. I mean, two-thirds goes to our departments, one-third is to the, sorry, one-third, two-thirds split. So if we're able to grow that sales tax revenue stream, then the businesses get more, the apartments get more.
Do you really think China Faye got that much more business because of being in front of the building?
Yeah, so everything else, yes.
I hear all the time.
Well, the discussion for tonight is on the distribution of the $5,000 that this council has already approved to, to fund this grant. So I just want to make sure it's very clear what we're voting on tonight.
Can I ask a question? Well, this has been voted on every year?
Yes.
So this will come up next year to be voted?
We've built the process, make sure the council's supportive of the program before I go out and solicit for donations, solicit for applications.
One more question. The former Verizon Building, former Verizon Building, was it occupied at the time that it was approved for the grant? Is it a timing thing where now it's empty?
Well, Verizon was just a renter. The building is owned by Mr. Crawford.
But does it have a business in it at this point? Does it not? Does he, has he indicated that it will be soon?
Well, he's got a lease. He did have a lease. He has a sign.
It's an open space for lease owned by Brian Crawford.
Yeah, I think the, it was just giving, you know, kind of common knowledge in case you didn't know the address.
This is a match for him.
Yes, no money is paid out until the project is completed. Right, no in-kind neighbors will cloud it, it's all part of physical property. And if everything's supposed to be purchased here? 70% should be purchased locally. Again, it's trying to build a sales tax revenue base by circulating dollars within our community.
I think our biggest objective in doing this whole grant was to show that Hot Springs is still open and alive. It's a main thoroughfare, 385, or, yeah, 35 is, people drive through, and the more buildings we have, quote, look like nobody's in it, they just keep going on. So that was the intent. So I really believe it's a good positive thing.
How many applications were there?
We had six, I'm not, six. So we weren't able to grant what all those requested unless, but this was what was signed by the committee. And those that were awarded and those who are not awarded are still able to apply for the next round, assuming it was the next round.
Okay, so, pardon? Who receives them? Well, they haven't yet. When they, when they, after we vote, I will tell you. I mean, it's in your, it's in the packet, but, just for the sake of, you know, depending on how the vote goes, I don't know if we get off. So any other discussion on how we distribute the $5,000 that was already approved by this council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I didn't hear ever, can you just do a, so we've got some quiet voices in this group.
Nelson?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Wetzel?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Swartz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. The distribution of the $5,000 is to the building at 102 North Chicago. It formerly actually had In Signal in there, for those of us in telecommunications, there is a difference, but they're calling it the Verizon Building. They receive, they will receive $768.06. I'm not sure how this math worked, but I don't care, I guess, it adds up. We were very careful. Yeah. Red Rock River Resort, $1,400. Earth Goods, $990. And Museum of Childhood, which is on Jennings, it's a new business there, $1,841.94. So again, motion carried. Item D, discussion of possible motion to reclassify city administrative position as a full-time exempt effective on tomorrow, 16th.
I'd like to make a motion to re-table this until our next meeting.
Which next meeting? The admin or?
Six.
City Council?
There's, there might be some questions surrounding it, still.
I'll say.
Which is fine, we can answer.
So I have a motion to table and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled, no discussion allowed?
To the city council meeting, right?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that's how that's supposed to work, so you did that right. Thank you. Admin, finance officer report. She's doing minutes.
I have very much to report. I'll keep a brief. Just a reminder to the council members that have not turned in their 2014 audit reports for their new copy, other verbiage changes that Carolyn mentioned were gone over, and I'd like to get you the corrected copy. Our website has been updated for those of you that look to our website for that information. It has the correct verbiage in that document. There were no changes to any of the numbers or any of the opinions, just verbiage changes in the auditor's comments. So please bring me your old ones, so I can give you the new ones as soon as you can. And then also, Carolyn mentioned SDSU-led workshops surrounding board development design for elected officials. I'm looking for feedback on dates, the more feedback I can get, hopefully, the more well-attended we can have that, great workshop and training opportunity. Next meeting, look forward to the first reading of our annual appropriation ordinance. That ready? First meeting in September, we'll have the first reading of that ordinance. And I believe all of you received the email with the agenda for the SDML annual meeting, which will be October 5th through 7th. For those of you that can't go that far, right? But if you are interested in going, let me know, so I can make sure to get you ready for Davis and Rapid City this year, which is a very nice location for those who live very far away. So if you're looking forward to taking advantage of any of those workshops or sessions, please let me know.
Please, Miss Teague.
We talked a little bit in admin finance about the wayfinding signage, and I was decided at that time not to pursue it with a professional consultant, but trying to do as much as we can in-house, then coordinate the DOT. So that's our plan moving forward. For those not familiar, wayfinding signage, also directional signage, it benefits both pedestrians and vehicle traffic. Our goal is to integrate that directional signage with the 385 project in 2020 and 2021, and also maybe expand on that as well in local truck bypass and university. So those using our arterial streets, our main streets, can get directions to things like Evans Plunge, our golf course, but also the information centers, Mueller Center, Chamber of Commerce, the, even things like the RV dump station, our community assets that people seek out, who don't have good direction to get there. So we'll look to do that in-house. It'll be challenging, but at the same time, the DOT is responsive, we have good contacts there, it shouldn't be an issue to get done. We will certainly save some money doing that in-house. Do be prepared that the signs do cost money, so when that comes up, that'll be expensive to sign. We've already talked with one side manufacturer. Confidently, we're looking at an expense between 40,000 to 60,000. So it's the whole project for that amount for a comprehensive 25 to 30 destination sign program, I think that's a very good price. What Spearfish did theirs, and again, we're not Spearfish, and that's been clarified, just there, it costs almost 20, 26, $27,000. So we're definitely saving money by doing this part in-house. With that, we also need to do the wayfinding on the Freedom Trail. So when you're a bicycle or pedestrian on the Freedom Trail, it gives signals to what's going to come up next, whether there's big shelters, playground equipment, restrooms. I know when you're on the trail, it's kind of nice to know there's a restroom coming up ahead that might be available to you. So that will happen hopefully before that time. Those signs would be much cheaper if we could go all that in-house, no cobble. That'll come up again at the Parks Meeting here in September, we'll talk more about the Freedom Trail by finding, especially as we look to expand the Freedom Trail. It might not happen this year or next year, but as we look to go from Evans Plunge out to Lower and Upper Chautauqua Park, and people know how far is Brookside from Chautauqua, they get directions that way. Evans Plunge right now, we've already started a conversation with All Seasons Screen Printing here in town. If you look around Hot Springs, there's a few places you can get Bison Apparel, Hot Springs Bison Apparel. And so All Seasons has been the only screen printer business in, in Hot Springs locally. We're talking with them to carry some of their product in our gift shop, give them a retail space. What we do with the arrangement there is they price the product, we get share of the profit for a lot of the cost calls on the manufacturer. So as Bison Athletics kickoff, looking to get more Bison product into our gift shop to get more foot traffic, in Evans Plunge, into our gift shop, and then make a roll, some new fresh designs as well. It's a, Elder might be a big fan of ones there on t-shirts, romperies. So that's kind of come down the pipeline. School does start this Monday, you have days to begin with, make sure you have dismissal time, so you'll see the school lights flashing when you're driving, it's 15 miles an hour in the speed limit, right in the school zone. And Chief Close tomorrow, I think, has a good article for the public as to why that's important, people follow that speed limit, even though it feels like a highway you should be doing 35 on. So be aware that school's in session as of Monday, and plenty of people post the speed limits. And also, I'll just be a reminder, 8:31 last Wednesday of August is recycling day. We've had great success with recycling so far. I'm anxious to see what we collect this go-round, but we've collected tons and tons of trash that's been diverted to recycling because of our new Brookside program. So the last Wednesday of the month, pick up here, that happens to be the last day of the month this month, the 31st. That's all I have for my report.
Thanks, Nolan. Appreciate it. I don't really have a report because I'm focused on executive session. And that's what I really want to share with the council, and so.
Do you need a motion or showing, do you think?
I do.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So appreciate you all.
Okay.
All right, we are back from executive session, so we're going to go back to personnel.
And I'll make a motion that we accept all the personnel items to be voted on as written. We accept item E.
I second that.
I know we already discussed, but.
Do we need to wait on Chris?
Nope, he's rolling. I know, it's a little confusing. Can we just?
We'll restate.
Yeah.
Get to turn it on.
You're up. Chris, your behind is off.
Nope, I got it back on. I'll knock the camera, overdoing it.
The personnel items A through F, with the exception of E, that we vote as written. And I second that.
As written?
Yep. That they are, the way that they are written on here?
With the except.
Yeah, with the exception of E.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make another motion that I need.
It's supposed to be yourself.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make another motion that I E, not accepted. That's higher.
Discussion? All in favor of not hiring, I, I mean?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um... Motion carried to not hire.[1790.12]